Good evening, and welcome to the March 4th meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. First order of business is roll call of members, starting on my far right.
Shepherd here.
Sutchee here.
Capiello here.
Tessier here.
Allen present.
Frisco here. Also with us is Tom Plan and Vanessa Price, Arbor Irvine Land Use and Planning Administrative Assistant. Next is the review and approval in minutes from February 18th. If you have any questions or corrections, comments.
I move that we accept the meeting as written?
Second it.
Roll call.
Shepherd approved.
Sutchee.
Capiello.
Whatever.
Tessier, I.
Allen.
The mic won't take.
Next, we have a preliminary conceptual review. Oh. Caught me.
Okay.
It's okay. Item, action items, number five, continuing case from February 4th, 2025.
I just had a few quick updates before we get to that, Mr. Chairman, if that's all right. Just wanted to let the board know that myself, as well as working with the Energy Committee, Paul Panash is looking at doing Soul Smart. I hyperlinked it on the agenda, so those folks that are in the audience that want more, are interested in that, they can click on that, as well as when Barbara sent out the agenda, you can click in there to find some more information. I talked with the lady that's running it, and if anybody is interested in also being with us, essentially what they're doing is looking at our existing solar ordinance and doing like a free audit of it, making suggestions, and probably just come back before the board if they make any suggestions with the Energy Committee. So just give you a heads up on something that our office is working on, and also give the board an opportunity to volunteer if they would like to be part of that. You can just email me if you're interested, or let me know now. I just found out about it a couple of weeks ago as well. And then the next is the, some training opportunities. I know there's been lots of discussion about classics and private roads, or roads in general. If anybody's interested in NHMA, they host a training every year called a Hard Road to Travel Workshop. It's a little bit more in-depth as well, not just with the classics, private roads, but other things there. I've taken it once online and last year in person. I think it's worthwhile to go, if you guys can make it. Once again, our department has funding for these opportunities, and I know many of you already attend these, but there's the OPD Office of Planning Development at the state that do their monthly webinar series. When I put the agenda together, they didn't have their next series out, but now they have the next one out about floodplain. So with that, that's all I have for the board right now.
Okay. Continuing cases from February 4th, 2025. 234-57 and 57-2 V24 sub, 14 owners, Edwood Lemos and Mark Marley Lemos. 14 lot subdivision, conservation subdivision on 49.6 acre lot, now 234, lot 57 and 57.2.
I just want to address the board before the applicant makes presentation. I know there's a lot of information that you have found in your packets, so able to announce packet number one, number two, when you picked up your packets. This is everything that's been submitted to us since their last presentation. The reason for breaking it up, packet number one, was their initial plan resubmital, and since then, CMA had made comments, and we're expecting a second plan submittal to address those comments. So when they come back, that would be those to address. There's some outstanding comments, so I'm sure that the applicant will probably go over from the CMA review letter. And I don't know if anybody has any questions before the applicant gets started. I guess. Okay.
It's not. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Scott Cole from Beals Associates. It's been a little while since we've actually been in front of the board, so just to give you a quick update where we've been since then. Since our last meeting, the topic of discussion was to go in front of the zoning board. There was a situation in the subdivision where we have now subdividing the existing premises on the property into a cluster lot, in order for that house to meet the new setbacks from the property lines and continue the use of their existing well, which at the time would have been off their property line and in the 100-foot buffer. We went to the ZBA to explain the situation, and we did receive a variance to reduce the 100-foot perimeter setback to 85 feet, which allows the existing house now to be within conformance of the new setbacks of the new property lines for that lot, and also maintain the use of the existing well on the property, so a new one does not have to be dug. So that whole situation has been cleaned up. As Vanessa said, we originally received a second review letter.
Going from 100 to 85 feet, was that the whole perimeter or just the front?
No, just a short distance. Enough to fit the house. You see here, it's 119 feet that doesn't meet the 100-foot width, so within this area is 85. The house now fits within the full setback, and the well is just inside the lot, the lot So continuing on, we did receive a second review letter. We'd actually started to go through it, myself and Christian had some comments, so we had called Josh, and we said, Josh, we do realize there's a couple of things on here that we think we did address. He looked at it with Jody, and they had actually reviewed, I don't know how, incorrect set of plans. So they redid their review letter, which of course was a time delay. By the time we got theirs, in addition to receiving the variance, which we had their surveyor update the geometry of the plans, we were not able to meet the planned deadline. Of course, we continued working. The responses were pretty much provided. So what we did is, I have a response letter, hopefully isn't within your packet, that would be responses to the commentary, even though the plans weren't submitted. If anybody's reviewed the commentary, we're really down to, you know, very minor comments at this time with CMA. There's two that we would like to get input from the board, where we need some help with the board in their decision-making. All the rest of them have been done. There were some graphical errors we fixed, and some well radii, there was some confusion in the lot numbering. Originally, of course, it's listed about three times. There's the existing lot of record, which would be right here, which is 57-1. Well, throughout the process, of course, we used the parent parcel number is 57, and numbered all of our new lots, 51, 2, 3, 4. So there was actually two 57-1. Well, their comment didn't say a budding lot 57-1, so I assumed it was the new 57-1. So I had made sure that the well radius for the existing house was shown on all of the plans, and they said we didn't address it, not knowing that wasn't the lot they were talking about. So I had fixed that situation, so the radius is shown for the abutting well on all plans now. So if everyone has the latest response letter, second page, 12.3.2 under driveway design.
This is under packet number two, for if you still have them separated out. Anticipate it would be on top, but yeah.
Should be on Beals' lead ahead date, February 20th.
February 20th.
Yep.
Yep.
So page two, we're at the top.
February 20th. 13, 14.
What's that thing?
So at the top, 12.3.2 under driveway design. The engineers are questioning all driveway cover pipes, and their invert should be shown on the plan. This comment remains unaddressed. We responded, for all driveways that require a cover, one has been shown as required. So you'll see without, throughout the plan set, all the driveways have been shown in their proper location with notations and required inverts shown with the proposed color size as no normal course. Basically, we added a note to the driveway specifications to make it absolutely clear to the contractors on what they need to do when it comes to a driveway and a cover. That note has been added to the profile plan, which you don't have, but it'll be note eight. So the reason being, we tried to not show regular driveway cover inverts is, nine times out of 10, I think you folks realize this, they're not put in the exact location we put on the plan, just like I'm doing Bending Brook right now. And if they don't put it exactly to the foot in the same spot, a covered inverter is no good, and it causes confusion. So throughout the normal course, Mark, or the road agent, it's his duty to go out and look at the location, and he has the authority to say, I want it a little lower, I want it a little higher, I want it left or right. That's really where that should stay, and give him the authority to make those changes. That's why we don't put that kind of math on the plans, because it really just causes confusions when they come back, because if they actually move the driveway and try to use those same inverts, the drainage won't work. And then they'll say, well, it was on the plan, or you moved the driveway. So that's really the only reason. We're not trying to fight anything, it just doesn't make sense to do it. We'd rather have Mark be the authority in that, in that, you know, aspect. So we just wanted to run that through the board.
Can I ask a question? Is Mark willing to do that? Is what he should be doing?
I can't speak for Mark, but in projects that we've done before, like out back here, I know that they've had to shift it, and he's been able to do that. So with this project, I know there was a potential concern too about shifting the driveways, if it would, let's see, from the, talking to CMA about the leach fields, abutting the driveways as well, but that's, I mean, I assume that's his role, because that's what he's done in other instances, but.
You talked to him about it, because it might be important to do so, just to make sure work wasn't lifted on our end.
Mark is really the only one that can assign a driveway permit. I know because I had to get one to my lot. He is the last being that either.
If the driveway doesn't work, they won't get a permit.
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So the next one, actually, on that page a couple down, 12.8.8 has to do with curbing, okay? The comment, "The project is located in the Village District and has a grade in excess of 6%. Does the board require curbing?" The applicant states, "The CEPA grade section is very short."
Okay, yeah. You can do that.
"At less than 100 feet, it does not require curbing. Is this acceptable to the board?" So we are in the Village District, as you understand, and I want to read that regulation to you, so it's absolutely clear. 12.8.10, comma, 1. Curbing may be required in the following locations if the board determines their application is appropriate. In the Village District, a major access road, intersections with arterial or collector roads, and on any road that exceeds 8% grade or 6% when development exceeds 250 feet. So per that regulation, we look at this section here, we have a short section located right here of 7%. If you go to the road geometry panelion, that's acceptable in this district. 7% is your max, and that's where we are. So we are in the Village District. I think the board has actually seen this and reviewed it enough times to determine the whole subdivision doesn't need curbing. It definitely works with open space, it's better, we don't have subsurface drainage all over the place, and it would have been, I think, would have thought you would have brought that up earlier if that was the case. It's non-terrestrial road or collector road, and in other zones, it may be required on a grade above 6%, when the developed length exceeds 250 feet, okay? So that's the extreme. So what we're looking at here is this section between vertical curves. So we have where it starts at 450 and goes to 525. It's 75 feet long, that's it. I mean, that's almost the width of this building. And then it grows, you know, less than that into the normal grades. So we certainly don't think that curbing is required for such a small distance, where then you would have to supply, you know, different forms of drainage, subsurface pipe and everything else. It's a very short distance, you probably wouldn't even see it really by a driver's eye. We're way below the 250 feet in that regard, and it's really up to the board's determination. So we just want to get your thoughts.
Well, required curbing or indoor burms in the past, when we've had a steep section with a curve, like we have here.
Why don't you just?
Mike is on. And what we have, what we're trying to prevent is the, you know, the water going off the edge of the curbing, you know, undercutting the pavement.
Oh yeah, which I understand.
So to me, I think this is a place where a berm, an asphalt berm of some kind, to prevent that from happening would be appropriate.
75 feet? I mean, that's all it is, literally.
You know, you get heavy rain that was going to be coming down that road pretty quick. You know, I don't think we're talking about a lot of, not the whole section, but where curves and where it'd be susceptible to undercutting the asphalt where the rain comes off, it's a small section, I think would be a good idea to me.
Hey, we'll do it if you want it. I would just keep bearing in mind, you know, this is going to be proposed as a town road. You're going to have 75 feet of curb on one side, and I guarantee you, Paul's going to take that out the first year.
I don't think we're going to say anything to curb it, but at least like an asphalt berm or something, just to keep the water from coming off the edge.
Well, I think that's what curbing is, right? What else could it, would you want?
But I mean, that's my opinion. It's.
It would get board consensus.
Yep.
Get the board consensus.
Anybody else have a comment?
I see Ron's point. I think the only concern I'd have is only having 75 feet. I see that being a nightmare when they're plowing, and when they go on by with the wing, I think that that's going to be destroyed in no time, and it's going to be useless anyway. But I do see your point, Ron. So I just don't know if it's worth doing there.
Well, you know, you always see, in the spring, you always see the town plows, the town trust going, dropping the stone where it's undercutting all the time. So that's an issue that we have here in the town. We could do something to prevent that expense for the town in the future, it'd be nice.
Now, before we adopted the road, if we saw that was a problem, is that something that we could have them address?
If we accept the road, it's an ongoing problem for us in the future.
Yeah.
If we adopt it, but.
We have to adopt it. Well, we, basically, you know, we can't, you have to, when a subdivision gets done, it has to be off the Class 5 road better. So this road basically has to become a town road in the future, or the subdivision can't be done. And they're expecting, and they say it's going to be accepted by the town standard, etc. So that's why we can do the subdivision, because it's going to be a town, it's expected to be a town road in the future. Selectmen only have the ability to accept the road, so, but we've always done it that way.
Right, but it has to be in good shape in two years.
Has to be in good shape.
We've had some that have failed.
Has to be town standards.
Yeah.
So to answer kind of what Bob's asking, if it's, to do it later, I think that should be addressed now, so that way it's properly engineered. Not saying it wouldn't be properly engineered later, but I know that causes headaches down the road when you're getting to that two-year mark, or after that two-year mark, then there could be, I mean.
I think I would agree more with Ron, if it was on a steeper grade, you know, an 8%, I would probably say, yeah, it's warranted. 7 really isn't that steep.
It ain't true, okay, but if it's 7, you're not.
Yeah. I think what we could do, and again, I have the same concern, you know, being a tax person in town, I don't want to pay for something I know is going to get ruined, and I know it's going to. But like you say, the road has to be in good condition for when it's accepted. I think maybe a smarter way to do it is, for that small distance, we could armor the side of the swale with riprap, instead of putting the, you know, the berm. But that would stay forever, it would make it more solid, with either riprap or swale lining, which is permanent, but it's not intrusive.
And the plow wouldn't have a problem with that.
Exactly, yeah, the wing wouldn't hit it.
Yeah, sounds like a solution.
Yeah, me too.
Does that sound?
Is that a consensus everybody to add?
Do you want to add that to the?
Yeah, I can add it to the comments as well, the NOD, if he doesn't change it for the plan set. Just something to keep in mind, if you're looking for the responsibility for the town to do that, if that part of the town taking over the riprap, is that also?
Riprap is generally low maintenance.
Okay.
So for commentary on the engineering, that was really the two, you know, the two that we were in the gray area between the two firms. The rest is really minor. All studies have been provided, this should be in your packet, the environmental study that was prepared by.
Before you leave this, could we talk about the open space and public access?
Absolutely. Yep, I was actually getting to that.
Oh, okay. I'll wait till you.
No, that's mine.
Pulling up this document now?
Yeah, because I thought it was on 17.2. That we are moving on.
Just to clarify for the board, please, for staff, as well as going back to the proposal by the applicant about the, to the 12.8.9, is that the one that, would the board okay with what was proposed?
The riprap? 12.8.8. The one we just talked about?
The one prior.
12.8.8, and the driveway was 12.3.2.
Okay.
Well, yes.
Okay.
Yes, Vanessa.
Thank you.
One more question, so just on your response, it says under 11.6, "We have received additional comments from the department and revised the details requested and believe their review is complete." Is that your understanding too, Vanessa?
So I can, Vanessa actually sent me some commentary, I believe it was an email form. The mechanics of the actual male fitting, the fire chief wanted different, which we did in the detail. I changed that, revised the plan, and sent it to the town. There was, oh, there was a typo in the notes that said, because it's made up of three 10,000 gallon sections, and it said 10,000, where the total should have sent 30. So I corrected that, it was just an edit, and I sent that as well. I believe they have reviewed, to my knowledge, the revised location, they're happier with it before when it was.
That is correct. The fire chief did not have any other issues at the time. It says as long as it met the design by the engineer and didn't have any issues, so fire protection's good.
Yep. Yeah, so as far as I know, all the studies and legal documents have been supplied. The environmental impact assessment was supplied by Gold Environmental Services. Very straightforward, as you can imagine, you know, it's such a benefit to offer the amount of open space. I believe there were three, three species of turtles that were recognized in the area by the state. They have not been found on-site, they're more within a mile, I believe. So they don't seem to be a problem, but that will still be reviewed, because we have to go to AOT, and that's part of their review. So that whole study will go along with all the same materials, so they have their as well. And then, as asked, there has been a, basically a conservation easement provided to the open space, and I will let Alex speak to that a little bit, because I was not involved in creating that language, so.
Were there specific questions about the language that you wanted me to answer? Do you want me to just give a broad overview?
Well, I'm concerned about public access and trails through that, so it would be the nature of my question.
Okay, so as it's proposed right now, it's that it would remain, that the homeowners would own the open space land. I don't think that we are opposed to having public access, there aren't existing trails through there, we're not planning to build any trails in the open space area. There's, there's not, there's not great connection for public access here, so I believe that we could offer it, but it likely wouldn't be used. People would have to come in and park somewhere, drive their cars to come walk on this land. So there's probably better open space land in town already that people would use, but...
Could I make a comment to that?
Sure.
So the town has a committee, and we're looking at how we can connect our trails. Now, you're the first of sort of that development back in the area, so we don't have a trail system yet, but we might, because there may be people who want to use a trail to get down to the library and to more the center of town and whatever development comes there. So there might be a need on a portion of it to have a trail in the future. The committee has also recognized that we don't need to have parking at every trail. But is there a way to reserve some public access if that becomes in the path of what seems like an important pathway? You're just a little ahead of the curve in our planning here about this, but I would hate for the town to lose that option.
Well, I would be stronger than that choice, because that one corner right there, that flat corner, that abuts that trail system. And it's right, it's right above where the library is, so I.
So that abuts the railroad bit? Goes all the way down there?
That, I'm going to get up and over.
Can you, if you, can you pull up, because we are connected to a number of other developments that I know are in the works, that are coming that will.
This corner right here, Joyce, touches of that trail.
To the railroad.
The GIS maps, yeah, we can probably.
That's really important, then.
And the library is right down here.
Yeah.
So access from the library to that, on the 17.2, we can ask for 15% recreation space. And to me, this is a property that we should seriously consider that.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah, so Doug Development Group is here, and I know the library is this area here. And I believe there are maybe other developments contemplated, I don't know if they're before you yet or in a preliminary fashion. We did attend, you know, a meeting of the minds with your town administrator, where they sort of got everybody in the room, but unfortunately, we are before, you know, before the curve, as you said. I don't think we are opposed to reserving some of this as future recreation land, but it is intended to be owned by the homeowners association at this time.
So Ron, how could we?
Well, 17.2 says they, we can require up to 15% recreational space, it's got to be recreational. So that corner right there, I think we should reserve, and it doesn't need parking, because it can access from the trail. You know, like I said, it abuts the trail, so there is some wetlands in the lower part of it, but it's dry and upland, so to me, that section right there should be reserved for public access.
So Mr. Allard, would your proposition be that we put something in our documents that says the town would have the right to construct trails on up to 15% of the open space land?
I think even stronger, let me read the regulations, I haven't read them in a while. 17.2.
You can watch Jersey, that's the name thing.
15% where is it?
And then up.
Yeah, 17.2, 17.2 of the subdivision, 100% objectives of the town management plan, the board may require the dedication or reservation of park, playgrounds, or other recreational open spaces in the proposed subdivision. The board may require up to 15% of the land proposed to be set aside for such purposes.
I know.
If it's agreed to by the applicant and the board, the area reserved may be increased to an amount greater than 15%.
I know there has been another project that I've been a part of, where the town decided to take ownership of the open space, rather than the homeowners association. Legally, I'm not sure how we would reserve the rights for the town to construct future trails when there are none planned at this time. If the homeowners association is going to own it, we could certainly put that language in our documents, but if the town was interested in being the stewards of this open space land and managing it and ensuring it for public access, that might be another option.
I think that'd be the way to go. Given the proximity of the trail system to the library, I think that land can be, if it's owned by the town, that would be a plus.
So could we just divide it right here, have this be owned by?
Can you bring your microphone with you, otherwise?
I can, I can, I get what you're saying. So put a line here, this area that is behind all of the homeowners' lots could be owned by the homeowners association, this area here could be deeded to the town.
Up to 15%, but, you know, I was only thinking a chunk of that chunk over where the trail is, but I think.
I think that, for us, we've found that the insurance policy for these homeowners associations, when there's public access, it's much higher, so if the town was willing to take this land and cover the insurance policy for whatever they need to, if they need one for the public access, and the homeowners association was not going to be burdened with that, I think we'd be amenable to doing something like that.
I think we probably have to have a conversation with the town administrator on this.
Yeah, because the open space requirements are like the actual deed and that sort of thing goes through the, like, the select board process, but definitely have a conversation inside or at the next select meeting or something.
Just speaking to me personally, I think that's a good option.
Conservation mission here, what do you guys think?
Both sides.
I would say that, you know, maybe this is, since it sounds like there's a process that we have to go through, we wouldn't want this to hold up the approvals process on the subdivision itself, so that we can get moving with our state permits and other things, where we've resolved a lot of, understanding, we still have a few things to chat about, but if we could make it like a subsequent condition that we'd agree to deed this portion of the open space to the town, so long as the board reviews and accepts it, or something like that. like that.
If the board is open to that, I think that would be-
Yeah, I think the board would probably agree to that.
Are there any other questions about the open space or HOA documents that I could answer?
Just a quick legal question, I know that there's covenants and things like that, and we need to maintain the road as accepted by the town. Is that in the property deeds?
So that, that document will be referenced, so there is a document that was drafted that was given to you all saying that we are agreeing as the developer to maintain the road until such time that it's accepted as a town road. If that goes on record, then it would be part of the title for those deeds.
Okay, well then there's the stormwater management stuff down the road too, which is forever.
Yeah, that-
That should be in the deeds as well, because sometimes you get people that, you know, they buy the properties on the deeds, they don't know, they don't want to maintain, I didn't know.
Yes.
So it's got to be in the deeds.
Yeah, the stormwater O&amp;M manual is part of the association documents, which get referenced in every single deed for every single property.
But I do have a question about that stormwater, so it says for the road, pavement sweeping twice a year, and I assume that's the town responsibility, how do we do that? It says, if you look at the inspection maintenance manual checklist, it's the second one there. And I'm like, well, we don't have the equipment to do that.
Well, they do once a year.
They do it once a year in the-
On all roads?
Yeah.
All town roads, yeah.
Okay.
Spring.
It's like a trailer they drag behind a truck and it's-
So should we say, once a year, as opposed to twice a year then?
Seems like spring's the right time to do it, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Spring would be the time.
Okay, so we'll make that once a year. The other thing I just noticed was looking at, that they were saying that, you know, for the homeowners association, they were worried about the vegetation around the pond, I guess, and they talk about in, in the event of a drought, they're supposed to water plants as needed, but there's no access to water there, I assume, so how does that happen? I mean, it just sounded like trying to figure out from their perspective.
Guess the homeowners association's got to figure that out, huh?
Well, and once you got it going, you would assume the vegetation would be, it's native kinds of plants.
Well, it's, I assume it's on the top of it, not inside, but I don't know.
But, I mean, I would think it might need watering initially.
Yeah, I would think so initially, although I don't know where the water will come from. So, you know, if it does require water, we could be, could be a problem.
I think I should mention four members of the six that live on private roads, so they probably never see their roads swept.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Roads.
I don't think I've seen the machine driving around either.
Certainly, it's standard verbiage provided by the state, we can-
Sure.
Minimize it as much as you like. In regards to the water, I mean, when it becomes the association's responsibility, if they have to, and we'll see it happen, they could, you know, purchase a water truck or have somebody bring in water like they would have proved that instance.
My question's really for Vanessa, so the town has a system on data tracking to check that all this monitoring of stormwater gets done in the end, could you just explain that?
I would have to get back to you on that, because that would be handled not by my department, so that's handled, I would assume, by the road agents department, I'm not sure their capacity for doing all that work.
I think the position that we were going to have for half a person, probably was going to do that, so-
If you're talking about if someone calls about-
You kind of cancel that out.
If someone's calling to complain, like, having a code enforcement issue out there, I'm not-
That somebody's going to monitor that, the HOA is. So, I'm just curious about what system we have. Yeah, it sounds good, it sounds good.
Yeah, we do need a system. I mean, we have the checklist at the state for that the town's supposed to do, unless you have a place to do that, it doesn't sound like this is the first one where this has come up.
Um, so, from the experience that I have, that we get documents, we get them once a year, like, for example, it's a different project, but it's the brocks, it's not like a subdivision regulations, we don't do, like, HOA compliance, I guess is the best way to say, if they're doing all their things. I don't know if that's something that the successor may do, but it's not in my department, so I'll put it that way.
I can speak to it a little bit if it's helpful. So generally, the homeowners associations have people who are very eager to make sure that the association is running the way that it's supposed to.
So, resident?
That's correct, and that they're following all their rules, we find that they are self-governed very strongly, there are volunteers that live in the neighborhood that want to make sure that those things happen, and then if a problem comes up, if the drainage system is not working and it's backing up into the road, then the documents reserve the right for the town to, you know, communicate with the association. So if it were to be neglected for some period of time, caused an issue, then the town has the right to require them to clean that up.
But that's where the town tracking what our obligations are with the road becomes important, because they can say, well, you're not doing yours, I'm not doing mine, so we do need a way to process this, and it'd be good to at least know that in some way, like we're doing, talking about doing with the septic system, to have a process in place that just says, we need it once a year, and just to check that we got it.
So not to deter from this project, we talk about the septic ordinance later, that will be done through the code enforcement office.
Right, we're talking about having a process in place.
Did we talk about this at our next work session?
Yeah.
Because it sounds like this is sort of a, a problem that we need to understand.
Yeah, yeah.
I believe it's part of the management report, I'm trying to picture it, but I believe we actually talked with CMA about that, and their annual reports are supposed to be copied and sent to the town on a yearly basis. I believe that is in there.
It, it is.
Yes.
But we just have to have a way-
We don't know what happens if it happens.
Exactly. What you do with the data, I can't tell you, but-
File cabinet.
Yes, round circular one.
So, I believe at this time, we know outstanding, we have some very minor comments with CMA, most of which has been addressed, we just need to get them new plans. Sounds like there's some legal communication that needs to happen for the open space, that's pretty standard. We do need state permits, we need to complete AOT in that state sub, as everyone knows, there's no, no driveway and no wetlands, which is good, so I believe we are nearing the completion of this, this project as far as application goes, so I guess we're-
I just had one thing on your letter from January 23rd regarding stone walls, 5.3.1, parentheses 10, indicate whether existing stone walls be removed or retained, you mentioned that your response was, they will be removed. We also have subdivision regulations, Article 12, 12.1.1, parentheses 6, existing stone walls should be retained where possible or relocated and restored as required by the board. Everybody seems to agree that these are an important part of our rural landscape in New England, and we're wondering if it's possible to reuse the stones that have to be removed in an appropriate place that may fit in with the design of your subdivision.
Yeah.
Rather than just piling them somewhere and-
Yeah, I know the developer doesn't have a problem with that, we've done it in other, you know, similar jobs.
Yeah.
Usually in a normal course, there isn't a real good place to put them within the subdivision, so a lot of times what they'll do is they'll line the entranceway-
Right, that's what I was thinking.
-with stone walls or something like that, so, you know, they're more than happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Uh, I can open it to public comment? I'm opening it to public comment, would anybody like to make a comment, please? Step forward, name? Yeah, anything new? Here we go. Name, address, and-
Paul Panner speaking. Oops, sorry, John. I'm Paul Panner, speaking for the Conservation Commission, I'll show the screen here so that you can see what I'm talking about. We've noticed that there is a bioretention pond that impinges significantly on wetlands, you can see that displayed here. I can show you the buffer and another, or an indication of the buffer, if you look at it in this drawing, you can see this is the wetlands boundary, and this is a distinctive feature, these two bumps, this is the buffer right here, these are lots involved, if you can picture that and then refer to this drawing, you can see that this comes very close to the wetlands boundary itself and is certainly with the buffer. I did want to make a comment, Conservation Commission, you know, is very happy to see development like this with affordable housing, I think it's a real commendation and it's something that the town really needs, so I'm happy to see this, but I did want to point out, there's a problem here. So, it, it appears to us that the bioretention pond could probably be located so it did not impinge on the buffer, but at the very least, a 9.66 application would be, that was all I had.
Okay. Do you intend to file a 9.6?
We did not, I guess we weren't apprised of it. We did do the best to try to keep it obviously away from the wetlands as we could, as everybody understands, water runs downhill. In conjunction with that, you know, we do have test bit data that solidifies the design, but we also wanted to make, you know, the easements as, as simple as we could down the property line, so you required a 25-foot drainage easement, which runs down the property line between five and six, so to go north with that would basically be in the middle of that lot.
But if you move it north, you go along the other property line and connect it to the-
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
If you do the whole thing north, run it down the other property line, seems to me you can connect into it.
Because the slope seems to extend up there, so.
Yeah, well, the, right now, in the cul-de-sac, the low point of the cul-de-sac, you can see with the-
Oh, yeah.
The half moons, that's the low point, so it was designed to outlet in that location. Now, we realize it's not ideal, but with the amount that we're, we're saving, you know, we did try to do our best in the design, you know, sometimes that, that kind of happens.
Is there enough slope to, after you're on the property line, to, to go that way?
I, I don't know, to be honest, we didn't, we didn't look at it. You can see we do have elevation wise, on to go up and get that first foot, treat the water before it goes in, through this building, you have to be at a certain elevation and it looks, uh- The other end. Yeah, I can certainly look at it, I mean, I believe the, we'll get as much as we can, I believe by ordinance, is the, no disturb, 25 feet from the wet?
50.
50? So we can, we can take another look at it and do the best we can before we solidify with the AOT.
I will note, we did get rid of a lot of wetland crossings, so, it seemed like it's in total, it's the best way to go.
Okay, we will look at that. Anything further?
Anyone else? Good shot, thank you. Any comments?
Have them play there? Any other public comments?
Oh, yeah, we haven't closed public, anybody else like to comment for this public comment?
Is there anybody online that would like to speak on this application, on the new information that was presented tonight for public comment? If so, please unmute yourself or raise your hand, we'll give you a moment to respond. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody online that would like to make any further public comments on this.
Close the public comment. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah. How about a motion to come back?
I'll make a motion to continue this to the April 1st meeting.
Second.
Welcome.
So, G.I.?
Kathy, L.O.I.
Tess, your eye?
L.O.I.
Let's go. Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Can you print it out again? Oh, what happened? Do you not have any paperwork for the 9.6? Did I just mix it up a little?
Well, he's going to try to do it out, I would not mean 9.6.
No, 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 for the next one.
The next one? I think this is a, still is there?
There should be something in here? Okay, okay, I must have mixed it in with it, oh, there it is, I got it.
Okay, next case is 257-29-1-GR25-SUB4, on the Joe Fall Zone, request for the up to the wave as 9.6 in an impacted area of 15,091 square feet for a major subdivision of four-lot frontage subdivision that includes one back lot on a 35.84 acre lot. Now, 257, lot 29-1, located on Mary Hill Road in the general residential zoning district, request of Barry, Barry surveying and-
Welcome.
I'd like to address the board, if you don't mind, before Chris starts, I wanted to mention the board, that we should discuss if the application is complete before they move forward. Protocol that we should be doing first, that we have received everything for the application is complete, the application has submitted a waiver for the project, but that's not a waiver from the application itself, it's from a regulation during the design. Or if there's any other historical, you want me to talk about how this came to be?
Sure, please do.
Okay. There was, Mr. Barry will probably go in more detail, of course, the most recent submittal that you've received, the change in design from the initial submittal, let me back up, the initial submittal was for a four-lot off the interior road, the variance was granted for that, was for a private road standard, the re-submittal of the design, which the design that you see tonight, that Mr. Barry will go over, talks more about having one driveway off Mary Hill, the other three off the interior road, and they also received a variance granting that as well. So, I don't know. So, looking forward to make the applications complete this time.
All right, so. You have to get the waiver first, according to your comment, so you want to just do the application as complete?
Application is complete, because the waiver is actually for the design portion, so.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the application as complete? I have a question about that, on the new revised drawings, I believe, it still says proposed private road on all the pages.
I did make that mention to the applicant, and he said in the future claims that would be changed, he thought he had got them all, but they should be for a common driveway.
Yeah, because that, that is state law, we can't do that.
Well, your regulations-
Be a class five or better road.
Yeah, your regulations actually allow for a classification of a private road, but I understand your, your comment, will, the term private road is being used in terms of, it has three and it needs to be named, so we'll just call it a shared driveway and we'll make sure it gets named, so.
It, it's just interesting, because we were talking about this before, I was thinking about this today, what's the difference between a driveway and a private road, and when we're looking at this, are there any issues coming up in the future if we don't, again, track this appropriately, we'll have a different view of the number of driveways or private roads or, you know, roadways.
The private road in this case would be for four lots or less, the right away is only 30 feet instead of 50 feet.
Well, but even if you make it with, if it's a private road even with three lots, then you're getting, then you're getting access off of, not a class five road.
Right.
So that's against state law.
Frontage.
Frontage, yeah.
Yep. There's difference between frontage and access.
Right, because you did two-
State law says pretty much the same.
There's not.
I'll affect you on that one, I don't want to affect you, Chris. I don't want to affect you, Chris.
I don't know that it's...
I can lose, but I think...
I don't know that it's overly relevant, so.
I mean, it's just a question, do we have a way, is it ever important to track this or to understand what's a driveway that's named versus a private road that's named versus a public road that's named?
So part E 911, any, I guess at this case, in this case, it's a driveway, has to be named in order for E 911. So if it's three or more houses, we call it a road as far as E 911 is concerned, because that's for safety purposes. So we do have a road name list, we're working on reclassifying it to see, because we all just called them all private roads before, so this is internally that we're working on with the building department for the roads. But your ques, so, if it's two lots, it doesn't need to have a road name for E 911 purposes. So what necessarily, E 911 calls a road does not necessarily mean a road as far as definitions.
I understand, but I guess, do we track that internally? So if you were, if we were to have somebody do a plowing, you say, we want these roads to be done, if they're all in our database, whether they're a driveway or not, as a road, it's no longer accurate, so it seems like we have some way to track it.
So for a plowing situation, it would be a town road.
I thought this was a driveway.
So this would be done, well, I'll let the applicant...
Can I, can I provide some clarity?
Go ahead.
Yeah, please.
Way off the tracks.
Yeah, can we ask for the application is complete and then we can move forward with those questions?
It'll be for a workshop.
Do you want me to provide clarity now, or do we want to ensure the application is complete?
Let's get the application so we can talk in more detail.
I appreciate the expediency, thank you.
I'll make that motion to accept the application as complete. Is there a second?
Second.
Call call.
Sheriff, I.
So G.I.
Cappy, L.O.I.
Tess, your eye.
L.O.I.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
Now, just to let, enlighten the board, on Young Road, we had two common driveways, each with three houses on them.
Yes, that's correct, so.
So we just did that, so.
Yeah, it feels like Groundhog Day sometimes, but here we are.
It only took two years.
So, Christopher Barry with Barry Surveying and Engineering, before I get into the substance of our application, just to come to a close on our previously started conversation, the Barrington subdivision regulations are very clear about shared driveways. Shared driveway can have three or less lots on it. Four, as soon as you go to four, it is classified as a private road, and there are standards, construction standards, for that private road within the subdivision regulations. Anything over four lots is then classified as different roadway structures, and they are developed to a public standard. Four and less are privatized, we're going to talk a lot about an organization group that has to maintain this shared driveway essentially, as a private driveway, and stormwater features, which you just talked about with the applicant before, and I know is a topic of concern for a couple of the butters. So that is how the subdivision regulations deal with a shared driveway versus a private road versus a public highway. Whether or not the municipality tracks that in any way, I don't think so, because it's either public and it's part of that public infrastructure, or it's completely private and they have no, no, I don't want to say no concern, but they have no obligation to maintain private infrastructure.
Well, maybe we can pass off on a workshop then. You had that, because I'd be interested...
I would need more clarification, what you're looking for, we do have a road name list that says what's private and what's not private.
Okay, this will be noted as being private.
Yes.
Yes. Once it goes through the naming process and building permits are pulled, then it goes on the list.
Okay.
The new list that came out in April.
Yeah, if you did not get one of the, I don't, I passed it out at one of the board meetings, I can email you a copy if you'd like.
So if I can just, from my own knowledge, clarify, so a driveway is different than a private road in terms of the quality that it's built to?
Correct.
Okay.
Number of houses.
That's great. That's really...
So if you think about it in succession, two, two lots, you know, the, the quality and width may be, you know, grade one, three lots, it would be sort of a grade two, and then four lots, it's wider, it, you know, the construction of it increases pretty substantially, and then if it's a public road, of course, it's a full-on road standard, so.
Yep, just trying to learn.
Yep. And I guess before we get too far off track, I will point out that other municipalities, I say municipality, like Barrington's a big metropolis, but local, other local cities are using, utilizing GIS to track stormwater systems so that when people submit, it, it functions in two ways. First, it sends out reminders about stormwater systems, and then, secondly, it allows a portal for people to actually submit their reports to, because right now, the city of Rochester, I submit it in one location, the city of Dover, I submit it in another location, the town of Barrington, I'd, I'd have to ask my dad where we even submit them to, but, you know, each pla, each town goes to different people for different reasons, mostly skill and budgeting, but there are, I think, pretty basic GIS systems to track private road systems and, and stormwater systems.
Okay, thank you.
If I look at the notice of decision from the ZBAA dated, this is the December 18th.
That's from the prior design, the design...
That's outdated.
However, the language in there is curious, allows, it allows shared access points and shared driveways to reduce the impact on parcel of land and reduce curb cuts on Mary Hill Road, uses the term driveways. Our conservation subdivisions about to be updated, you know, they're going to be four lot clusters, so we're going to have to update our private driveway, common driveway regulations to move that up to four allowed units. My question is, did you ever think of asking the board for a waiver for a fourth lot, thereby you would be able to reduce the 15,000 square foot impact to 5,000 feet because you could fit the road as it was originally laid out when we're going to use a private road?
So if you don't mind, if I could actually give a presentation on our project first, then...
That's fine, I thought we were all familiar with this.
John, then you can hammer me, how's that?
Okay, go. Give me a stock.
So, I'll, I'll be brief, because it sounds like we really just want to get to the meat and potatoes of this.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're proposing a four lot subdivision off of Mary Hill Road, and I know we've been here for a design review once, and clearly been to the ZBAA twice for special exceptions. We're proposing two, what I would call standard or form A lots, on the southern side of the property, we're proposing a back lot with a 75-foot neck, and then we're proposing another form A lot on the north side of the property. The original subdivision design contemplated this serpentine area being designed as a private road, and due to constructability of that, due to overall land disturbance, not just buffer disturbance, you look at the overall land disturbance, impervious surface calculations for both that and the new proposed, the actual land disturbance is less with our current design. And so the reason for that is, the original design, because it did go to four, it was considered a private road, and so it had to be 20 feet wide, it had to meet your shoulder width specifications, which in a cut format is six feet, and in a fill format is, is three feet. So really, the surface area on this roadway was 29 feet wide. In addition to that, it requires the swale infrastructure to be of a certain geometry, and to John's point, if we were to look at requesting waivers to that standard, we would essentially be asking for a waiver to the entire geometric design, and I don't know that that's overly appropriate for, in this particular case. And so what we opted to do is reduce the infrastructure that would be required for this one, basically driveway, going from four lots down to three, and then proposing a driveway access through an upland area off from Mary Hill Road. Now, I will point out that the driveway access itself comes through two, an upland island between two wetland areas, so when you take that area and offset the 50 feet, you're basically traveling all through the buffer here. So it's not like we intentionally drove a driveway through a wetland where we could have avoided it, which I think this board has seen recently. It's not as though we've chosen the path of least resistance solely for the purpose of going through the wetland buffer. And I would also point out that much of the buffer impact, if you look at this congruently, is actually due to the fact that we're installing stormwater systems for both of these driveways, when in fact, there are many instances where we do frontage subdivisions with no stormwater considerations whatsoever. So I, I do respect the comment, John, and I always respect the comments from the Conservation Commission. When we say 15,000 square feet, it seems like a big number, but in fact, much of that number is driven by the fact that we're instituting things to actually protect the wetlands, protect downstream landowners through the use of innovative stormwater design. So that is the substance of our 9.6 application. In terms of the actual subdivision application itself, I think if you were to overlay the two designs, you would recognize the amount of disturbance that is being reduced on site. So if you can imagine this roadway being nine feet wider and pushed a little further up slope with that swell geometry, we essentially were cutting all the way up in this area here. This particular design, we're not cutting all that earth, we have far less disturbance on the overall project. Less disturbance, less impact to the natural environment. Clear reduction of impervious surface in total, and yes, the trade-off for that is, there is an area that we are crossing through the, the buffer. We're not impacting jurisdictional wetlands, we're capturing the flow, we're sending it to a bioretention cell prior to discharge. So in many respects, we are recreating the benefits of that buffer through engineered methods.
I actually was thinking that you do it as a private driveway, common driveway. Simply ask for a waiver to add a fourth lot, so your geometry is still the same as you desire it. You just have to ask the board for a waiver, and as I said, we're going to be changing that to four lots as soon as this, if this new regulation passes.
So...
Soon in regulation.
So I would need...
Because all of our clusters have to be in four pods under the new regulations, they can't be larger than that.
Understood. So I would have to ask for a waiver...
They, they, there would be access by a class drive road, right?
No. It could be, no, there could be access, we could change the subdivision regulations zoning. It could be also by driveways, that's kind of what the consultants are talking about.
So...
What do you think?
I don't think he's proposing a conservation subdivision.
Oh, no, no, I understand that, I'm just saying that we're going to probably change our regulations as soon as the vote takes place next Tuesday, and it would reflect exactly what I'm saying, that's all.
Oh, okay, I, I hear what you're saying, but he would not have to adhere to those new...
I know.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I misunderstood.
No, that's fine.
But we could keep it for three for conventional and four for conservation, so it wouldn't be across the board.
Could be. I just think right now, to have that major impact on the wetland buffer, you can maybe avoid that by simply asking for a waiver, seems like a no-brainer to me.
So can I just point something out?
Please, go ahead.
It's, I do underst, so first of all, I appreciate your line of thinking, because I, I think the board recognizes I love creative thinking. But I also, from the standpoint of the regulations, I try and ask, though it may not seem it, I try and ask for as few waivers as possible when we're trying to get a project approved. There's sort of this litmus test as you go through projects of, well, how many waivers and variances do you need, and at what point is it not a project? Okay? So I would have to ask for a waiver to multiple pieces of your subdivision regulations. It's not as simple as asking for a waiver to only have a fourth lot off from a private driveway.
Would that be 12.4.1 to allow a four lot concert, a common driveway?
Yes.
We probably should look at 12.4.2, that roads have to follow the lot lines, which doesn't make much sense actually, because on Young Road, we didn't, you had to cross two to reach the third lot, right?
I, I agree.
That probably should disappear, but anyway, I thought it would be much simpler and less impactful.
So I guess I'd like to hear from the rest of the board on that topic.
Sure, absolutely.
I, I would not feel comfortable, I, I mean, I, it would be great if you changed your subdivision regulations to allow that, I think that's great. But I would not feel comfortable coming back to the board unless instructed with a fistful of waivers to achieve that goal. That's asking, from our standpoint, that's asking for...
So beyond the one I cited, 12.4.1, you'd need more?
Yeah, we would need a waiver, I'm just looking at the table, we would need, we would need a waiver to the entire table, so the question comes, do I have to ask for a waiver to the table or the, every single item within the table? I'd have to review the rest of the regs, but, I mean, that's three waivers right there. And I, I'm not adverse to writing waivers, I write them all the time, but...
Okay, that's all. Your guys' point of view.
Yeah, yeah.
It just seems the expense and the impact on the environment just seems, could easily have been solved with the waiver, but. Board has more comments, I'm sure.
Like I said, if the board, if, if the board wants us to essentially ask for this design and access to this lot off of this design, I'll go through and ask for those waivers, and it would remove this access point.
I guess I'm not there, I'm not there, John. To me...
Okay, that's fine.
You know, the, the access going along, sharing the property line going up that, I think that's important, and I think, you know, we're supposed to do fee title subdivisions, and this has easements all over the place.
Well, as, as it's proposed, you are also violating 12.4.2, because you are crossing all those lines, right? So you will have to ask that, you will have to ask that waiver.
But our regulations say, you know, clarity of ownership and make sure there's no easements, this has easements everywhere, and, you know, you, it's not along the lot line, it's, it's right through the property. Every single property has major, major, the, the road access goes right through it, the driveway access goes right through it, dividing the properties. So to me, you know, having clear ownership, clarity, you know, easements, fee title land is supposed to be one of our regulations, this is not that.
I, I thought we intentionally did that, we talked about that.
We did.
But we agreed that because it would be less impactful to the land and to the wetlands, we agreed that that would be the right geometry to do it. Whether or not we need to formally get a variance, I don't know, but I thought we talked about that already.
We discussed that, yes.
We discussed that there would be, listen, to me, the fact that the subdivision is, you know, the easements are across every single property, in the middle of the property, it's not along the lot line, to me, this, I just don't like it, I mean, it...
So what would you, what are you proposing?
Well, let's, you know, let's say it goes across my property, the tree falls down on my property, blocks access of the guy down the road, you know, you, you're building in conflicts between homeowners, because it goes across my property, who's going to, you plow my road, we all agree to plow, and you damaged my property, now I'm upset. I mean, it, this kind of situation, you know, is, makes it difficult down the road. If the neighbors get along, it's, it's great, a lot of times, neighbors don't. When you get a situation like this, neighbors don't get along, you got a real problem. So we get a subdivision that, you know, basically says, these neighbors better get along, because otherwise, it's going to be a horror show, so.
I guess I'm just wondering, so you would like to reopen the design process to talk about...
We had his unviewed, gave non-binding opinions then, now we're reviewing the application.
So I pointed out then, and I'll point out again, the design is the way it is, you know, I don't want to call this an open space cluster subdivision, because it's not, but it has, but it has elements of that. But it has, but it has elements of that. Meaning, the alternative to this is we would develop a road and there would be a roadway infrastructure. And we would have frontage off from that road and it would become a public road. And we would have additional lots on the subdivision. And we approached this project as less is more. And so that's why we ended up with this particular design. I understand your point, Ron. But I would point out, and I, and I can hear another board member's voice in my head, that the past sins is, is, is not relevant. But I can think of five subdivisions that have been built in this exact fashion, one of which has been recently approved. And in the end, I think we were all happy with it. So I, I don't know that I agree that it's inappropriate at all times. I think if you're trying to create, intentionally create contrived situations where additional lots are yielded because of that, I think it's important to look at that. But accessing this piece of property in this particular way, I think is, is the least impact.
More comments by the board?
Can I ask if the Conservation Commission has anything to add to this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hearing nothing from the board, I'll open it to public comment. Anybody speak?
Paul Panish, once again, speaking for the Conservation Commission. I have to say, John, that we were, what we were going to say was very much along the lines of what you proposed as far as requesting additional waivers. When, I don't know what the legalities are in terms of not having a private road as opposed to a multi-use driveway. I don't know if there can be agreements for a driveway between the tenants which might take care of some of those easement issues. I mean, the easement issues are the same regardless. What I would tell you is when we, when we first saw this proposal, the earlier proposal, we thought it was a very creative solution to a significant problem. We were really happy with it. And then we got the updated plan and it was sort of a slap in the face, to be quite honest. I, this might be something of a gripe session for me, but I disagree with someone of, some of what the zoning board of adjustments said. You know, they say it won't have any adverse, adverse effects on the natural functions of wetlands in the site. I think man-made modifications of wetlands are not the same. And I think that's been proven out in studies. I'm not an expert on the subject, but I have read on it, at least in the past, that that is the case. These impingements are significant. What has happened in, with the new road is it effectively, you know, it would be very hard for me to analyze that using the method that we are trying to develop. And I'll get to some issues that this brings up with that method afterwards. But it, it almost turns that into a wetlands crossing. I mean, the buffer is reduced to zero. So you're impinging right up to the wetlands on both sides. Not happy with that. The areas, as Chris mentioned, are significant. And, you know, the alternative of having the private driveway solution would have been good. Now, if this is converted to a conservation subdivision with a cluster unit, of course, that changes the whole thing. And I have, I can't make any comment on that right now. What I was going to say about the well and buffer ecosystem services method is, this is, this and some of the earlier plans have pointed out a shortcoming in the method in that what it has used is linear distance of impingement into the buffer. Whereas what's, what seems very significant is the actual area of impingement on the buffer. And it doesn't take that into account. These are issues that we need to take up with the wetland scientist who created the plan. And that's something we need to do in the future. But I appreciate what the board has said about their comments on this development. And you've heard what I had to say. And I like what you proposed. It was what I was going to propose in terms of additional waivers. And more, I can't say, but thank you.
Any comments, anybody?
Give more.
No, I'm sorry. Sure, please come forward.
I'm sorry, can you just, on the microphone, I think you might.
Got it there? Okay. Kevin Trompacc at 101 Mary Hill. So same comments that the gentleman on the conservation said. And also concerned just about when we talk about the, the private roads and the homeowners association in terms of who takes care of doing what, how that's managed. You know, I certainly don't want to be the one trying to, you know, manage those regulations. So I think that's something we have to consider when we're, you know, taking a look at all of these things. And it was, you know, brought up in the, in the, in the project before this too. So just like to take that into consideration and think about that. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll see if anybody is online. Is there anybody online that would speak, like to speak for or against this application? If so, please unmute yourself or raise your hands. We'll give you a moment to respond as I see several folks are online. Mr. Chairman, I don't see that anybody would like to speak for or against this application at this time.
Okay, hearing none, I'll close public comment. Chris?
I don't know that there's anything for me to continue on. I, I just want to make a comment. If the board doesn't like this and instructs me clearly to gain access from this and ask for the necessary waivers, I will do it. But what I'm not going to do is walk away guessing, come back with a fistful of waivers and be denied. So if, if that's the board's current decision and position, instruct me to do that, then I'm happy to do it.
That too, why not? But let's. No, go ahead, sorry.
I, I couldn't hear exactly what she said, but I want to provide CMA with the design to review.
Right. Don't get them too early if we're going to change things right here.
Right.
Anybody? Do roads or find driveways or protect the wetlands? That's your decision. How do you feel?
Just for my clarity, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. You're asking if design number one versus design number two? Is that what you're?
Yeah, I'm trying to get a consensus. So we'll have people feel here.
So option one and two, I got, okay, thank you.
Do you find with the design as it is and we'll vote on that? Or would we like to take another look where we could save some of the wetlands buffer? Anybody support that part?
I support looking to save the buffer as much as we can.
Raise your hand if you want to support the buffer.
I, I could go either way. So, so from my standpoint, John, I like the way.
That's why you're on the board. You hate being go, I, I don't want to make a decision.
But I like the way John's thinking. But I also see that Chris has prepared all of this based on what we had said before and following today's regulations.
Well, you gotta remember, up until this point, we were just at design review. None of that counted. Design review, it can be.
Yep.
This is our first meeting where we just said, now we accept it, the application.
Agreed.
This is the starting point of what could be a long process.
Agreed. But he was following our current regulations and kind of a feel from what the board had said before. So that being said, I would be happy to entertain what he wanted to do today. But I also do like the idea of protecting the wetland a little bit more. And I think it would be easier in less, having, less road cuts and another driveway access off Mary Hill would be great. So I could, if the census of the board is, yes, let's have Chris go back and do waivers, I would be happy to do that. But I would also entertain having Chris go forward today with whatever he's prepared.
I think Chris is also looking for, you know, is, is it, is either plan acceptable?
Is the what?
Is, will either plan be acceptable to the board members? I, I'm kind of, just so you know, I'm kind of negative on either one.
I was gonna say, you're a no vote, no matter what. I already have you in the no column here, so. Yeah. You're not hurting my feelings. I only, I only cry a little bit in my bourbon at night. Don't worry about it.
Oh, don't delude it.
Can I make sure I understand? Can you reiterate to me why and what you think should be done instead?
I mean, I think some, some properties just can't be, they're not good subdivision candidates. This may be one of them. To me, the driveway should be along, along the property lines. This has too many easements in, in cutting across properties. It's not, you know, it's, it, it, it's not, we're supposed to do fee titled land, you know, no, no easements. This is not going to be that situation at all.
So you would have liked having four driveways on the class five road that line up with each of the four lots.
What I'm saying is, either one of these does not meet the regulations. And I think.
I understand. And we gotta change the regulations.
But that's not about the wetlands, what you're saying.
No, he's no, he doesn't want, he doesn't like the whole project. So he's a no for anything.
And the alternative could be very bad for the area. So I'm weighing based on, like Chris said, what could become of a subdivision if he has to build a class five road.
And, and I guess for me, I'm looking at this wrong, like, he, he did come through and while, yes, I understand it was a design review. I mean, we didn't really raise this as an issue. In fact, we did talk about it. And there was, I think, a tacit understanding that we went long with that. So I think it's now we're coming back at the end of the process. And I worry that we're just rewriting.
Well, we started with 5,000 square foot in action.
Yeah.
Now we're 300% greater.
Right.
With this new design.
But it's because of the pond at the bottom, right?
Well, I think characterizing me is that, you know, agreeing with this path. I, that was not my intent to give that. And I think Andy Dampf, clearly not, is not handling board with this concept either. So there were negative comments made. There was, there were concerns raised by certainly both Andy and I in a design review. And, you know.
Yeah. And I think that the impact is down at the bottom of, of the driveway, right? Or road. That did come up late as well.
So did I see four people would like him to come back and attempt to reduce the impact on the buffer by using a shared driveway, which I guess would be paved and promptly, under the regulations, it would be 12 to 18 feet.
I would.
And usually it's done 16 feet? Is that what you were looking at?
So it would be designed at 20 feet wide, would not be paved, contain driveway geometry.
20 feet would be sufficient for fire department.
Yes. So the 20 feet, your regulations require less than what the driveway regulations are for NFPA. So I, I always default to NFPA standards.
And then the landing spot for lot number four would go back to where it was, which is an ideal flat area. Here, test pit number 10. That's what we're all agreeing to, I think. We got four votes here, would like you five votes, I'm not sure. Four and a half votes. So I understand. Well, luckily, you're early into the process. This is your first official meeting. We just accepted your application.
I don't think you understand land planning at all, John.
I understand. Because I remember being back in early November of '22, was it? '23 with Young Road.
Yeah.
Well, that's not nearly anything, but it may, yeah, but it's already been accepted. So anyhow.
So if the board would indulge me, I'm happy to make that change. A lot of it is not, a lot of it is deletion. So it's not like I have to re-engineer a whole pile of things. I'll have to update our stormwater analysis. What I would like is, once I complete that work, if I could submit that directly to CMA.
Sure.
With a cover letter that sort of discusses this conversation. So Josh doesn't look at me and go, hey, did you?
Josh is gonna immediately say, wait a minute, it's three, not four.
Did you not read the book? So if the board would allow myself and Vanessa to do that, then I would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I would need a motion that you would like to do that, the regulation reviews.
Sure. Oh, for CMA to look at that?
Yes, I need a motion for that, when you're ready. I mean, I'm pushing in front of your butt.
You just point at me when you want me to make something. That's the way it works here. Stand here, do this, do that.
Sounds like I need a motion.
Are we looking for a motion of something?
CMA for subdivision regulations and stormwater regulations. Once he has it, the plan set updated, directly. Directly, yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Wait, who, who firsted it?
I'll make the motion.
Bob.
Bob raised his hand.
Well.
Roll call.
I didn't know if that.
I'm seconded.
What was the official, okay.
What you said.
Thanks. No, Bob and John, got it.
Words right out of my mouth. Whatever she said.
Got it.
That's the regulations. See how we operate here, Marcus?
Got it, thank you very much.
Lucy goosey.
Hey now.
Well, at least this, this guy.
Okay, roll call vote, please?
Yes.
I'm sorry, thank you.
I second.
Test your eye.
All right. Triskelion.
Thank you, Chris.
Nope, not done, not.
Oh, wait a minute.
We have a motion for a continuance to a date certain. And if I need an extension, I'll ask for one.
Sure, so that would be the.
April 1st, is that?
Next one, motion to continue this application to April 1st, 2025.
Second.
Roll call.
Shepherd eye.
Sochi eye.
Test your eye.
All right.
I didn't mean to miss you. I thought maybe you had something else to say.
Nope, that was it.
John and Ron was letting him go first.
Thank you, enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
That's not the same, you're just into it. That's not just into it. It's been some months.
That's supposed to be West Green Place. Sorry, point of order.
I was asking how his headache was.
All right, so where are we?
Other business, Mr. Chairman.
Other business, I'm gonna hand that off to the planner because I seem to have just.
I mean, it'd be interesting to go back to some parts of the process and look at our design.
Are you on other business or you for this application?
Old business?
I was just trying to continue discussion about this.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we should go back because it's, you know, we are talking about doing design reviews. It's more of a standard part of this. And, and I think maybe we didn't give him enough of a, of a, you know, direction. And so here he is coming later.
I don't think it got to that point. He just went right to the ZBA. That was my opinion. Maybe if he had discussed things, why does he have to go to the ZBA? We could have short circuited some of those things.
So when he came to sort some clarity on the first submittal, he went to TRG and he decided to resubmit it based off engineering comments. Is what he told me when I asked him why he resubmitted.
Yeah. And I'm not saying, I'm not relaying the past. I'm just saying as we go forward and we're starting to do these more design reviews, it might be, if we look at this and ask ourselves, would it, how do we approach those design reviews? Maybe we need to give more consideration in those reviews to what the real feelings are. I, I mean, it would be interesting to go back and look at the notes from that review meeting and see what that said. But we should be, probably try to be clear as we go forward.
And once we close design review, they have a whole year to submit an application.
Right.
And it can be a new application unrelated to what was discussed in the design review. Doesn't say, just gotta file, they may change their mind or anything, so who knows?
Yeah. Yeah.
But that's also non-binding too.
Oh, yeah, everything's non-binding, right.
Right.
And maybe the other.
I just, I, yeah.
Take care, thanks for coming.
When they come in for a design, they're looking for which way you want them to go.
Right.
And I feel like you guys bounced them one way and then bounced them back. I could be wrong, but.
That's how I feel too.
Me too. But I, I think we did raise concerns. I think I had that concern as well, but I feel like we just sort of brushed past and said it was okay, which is why he's here with that. And what we're saying is, in action, that design review, there was more concern, but we didn't really.
I mean, I'd already continued the case, I don't think you should roll over more discussion about that.
Right.
Yeah, really cute.
Because all the butters have already left as well.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
But I see where you're going with it. Your more point of future, not, not specific to that case.
Yeah, that's how we function, I agree, yeah. Yeah, if we had, let's not discuss this, any case. I guess we should probably say, at the end of the design review, before we say design review is done, and then the clock starts re-year. Probably should say, anything we didn't discuss that's important? You know, he ended up going to the ZBA for two decisions, and the first one was to do the four lot thing, then he, if a person is, does this, and he says the topography is such that it would create a lot of trees being cut down just to do it, that's why he shifted. A person may have shifted.
We shouldn't.
I think, yeah, so without talking about.
Not to talk about a particular.
But I think that what you're saying, and I would agree, and I think I've heard this before, even, you know, my short time on this, is that we don't have a good communication loop with the ZBA. And there's maybe something, you know, structural that we need to do, I don't know what that is, to, to increase our communication across those two organizations.
That's two, you're two separate boards, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
We can have a planning board member on there for that discussion.
If you want, we can discuss at the work session more too.
Sure, we can just, let's save it for the work session, and maybe we have some ideas we can present to them. We did talk about, we did, you know, have a joint meeting, and maybe we should do that more often. You know, one thing that struck me, not in any particular case, but when they, when they did do the vote, certain aspects of a particular subdivision didn't seem that important. Could it be environmental? They kind of glossed over it maybe, or maybe not, maybe it was something else. So, without discussing any particular case, I was kind of surprised how quickly the vote may have taken place, that didn't really look at what's important, obviously, to the board.
Right.
Impact on the world.
And I think it's tricky, right? How do you get that communication? So, the more we keep working on it, the better. But let's, let's go on, sorry.
Well, we'll keep sending Vanessa to these conferences and get some wisdom.
Hopefully, yes. Trying to keep you guys on track, that's all.
Do you go into the road one?
Probably, because I feel like every, yeah, I feel like every.
Well, I'll go if you're gonna go.
I'm planning on it, because I feel like every.
Can you do the paperwork for me?
Okay. Talk about it off then, I can't, okay.
Let's get to it. 6A, 6A.
Anyway, let's, we want a motion to adjourn? Oh, yeah, old business?
So, under the, other business, I know at the last meeting, I appreciate the board discussion and about moving forward with the grant, and taking consideration that the grant, that I didn't want to submit something without the board at least taking a look, like as Ron said, like, we should have opportunity to look at it for this letter of support. There's a draft in front of you. There, the only big differences that may change between, that, between this version and going to the select board is that they're finalizing the budget. It will be under that $25,000 amount, and also, I know something might not be here, but they call it select men, and I know we call it select board, so that language will be changed. Is there anything else that you all felt like should be included? We talked about doing the solar, or not solar, I'm sorry, the septic ordinance as well as a regulation review, and also outreach, community outreach maybe for education on how to keep your lakes healthy. And it was a, it'll be a committee made up of select board members, planning board member, town planner, and code enforcement officer.
Here's a question, if.
Yeah.
If the, the septic regulation that we have proposed fails, how would we, would we still go forward with this?
Fails? Oh, I see what you're saying.
In other words, the, the.
I think this is a septic, I think this is stronger.
This one is stronger than the other one?
Yeah, and there may be some, I don't know, political wise, if the, are you talking about like, I'm sorry.
At the bottom of my road, there's a sign now, it says, no on Article 2, 3, and 4.
Really?
So, the septic regulation we're proposing, it to me is the first step. If that fails, do we want to try to go with a bigger step? You know what I mean? If, if, if that one fails, is there any hope of this one passing? And that's my question.
So, right, now we're proposing it as a health ordinance, and that's how it gets passed by the select board, because they're the health board for the town of Barrington, the health officers, code enforcement. I've been speaking with the town administrator, he mentioned maybe keeping in zoning, however, that doesn't give you enough, there's some implications with that, so it doesn't really belong there, in my opinion, as well as talking with the consultant on it, that it should be, come from the health board. If for some reason not saying that the select board wouldn't support it, but if there's some reason not, it could always be petitioned by citizens, that's what someone else had done, but it's more appropriate.
If the town says no to the first one, they're very unlikely to say no, they're very likely to say no.
You were looking to see maybe to expand on this, if, like expand on the scope?
Maybe we wait, let's wait, let's defer the decision till after the town vote, is my, my point.
Yes.
And see how the first one goes. The first one fails, I'm saying let's not even bother with the second one, because it will probably fail too.
Can I ask for a letter of support, though, for this, right now, or do you want to wait until the work session meeting? Letter of support.
I think if, if you want to get approval on the scope, including the septic, I would prefer to wait until the work session.
Okay, then I will. I'm not sure how that'll work with.
Yeah, timing might be a problem.
For a select board.
Put you into April.
Yeah, and let's do the 31st of March. So, I mean, what, so what I'm hearing, at least from my side, for letter of support, the letter of support's like, things could change a little bit, and I could put that to the select board saying, like, you know, that we discussed if, you know, article, I forgot what article it is in the code right now, but for the septic ordinance to go through, we may have, look at adjusting the scope of work to include that, because the next select board, I don't think, is to like the 17th, if that's right?
That's right.
Yeah, so, I don't, I could still bring it back to you on the 18th to update the scope of work, but for like.
I mean, yeah, to me, I.
I want a letter of support, I guess what I'm getting is I want a letter of support, it's stronger if you get a letter of support from both select board and planning board. So, for you guys, it's fine, but for the select board, if.
I support it.
You know, I'm assuming, I don't know.
What I was saying is.
I'm probably going down the rabbit hole, you see, I get.
I support it, but I'm, alls I'm saying is, if the town vote fails in the septic, I would say we should delete the, the septic scope from the.
From the scope of work.
And, you know, that's how I started thinking, but now I'm starting to think differently, because if it gets voted down, and then we do the work, this might be the evidence that gets the community support.
So, it could be next year. Strengthen it next year with.
Right.
Opportunities from here as well.
I, I would say include it. And, and we will have the opportunity, if, if we decide to tweak it, we can. Go after.
Move forward, so Vanessa don't get it.
But I think, I, I support it.
For what it's worth, I've been standing at the transfer station, and I do try to talk about zoning, I mean, not with everybody, and it's the selected people who stop, but no one has had anything to say about the septic.
The sign I just saw at the bottom of Beauty Hill just went up a couple days ago. So, there is a ground root level to say no to that.
I, I've seen some stuff on social media that's no to bigger lots, no to the septic, basically, big brothers trying to get more control.
The, you know, the inspection report every three years, that's a lot more aggressive than the one we proposed, a lot more aggressive. So, I think if, to me, if I view this town sentiment as no to that, this one's very unlikely to pass, very unlikely. That's my view.
By the way, you're a Beauty Hill guy, obviously.
Yeah.
You saw that lot at the end of Beauty Hill Road.
Okay, okay.
I'm not gonna say anything about it.
We're digressing, so, no.
I was just gonna have him watch a video.
No, you can just, no.
No, you can say, watch a video, you can talk.
Yep, this is not to deal with, just for the grant, so, letter of support, I think, the board for us going forward with it.
We're all set for that.
If, for some reason, the community doesn't support that, like, I feel like, like Bob saying, like, it could be strength, this is an opportunity for us to have professionals work on this, and it does no cost the town. So, I mean, it is costed, like, volunteer time and staff time, but.
We don't care about John's time.
So, I thank you, that's all I have.
I'm getting the big bucks for it, so.
And it sounds like you're willing to commit the time.
Yes. I personally think it's important from everybody that's been talking about it, and obviously, other communities are starting to adopt them.